We now call the order and the idols from the public.
Morning, sir. I'll try to make this as brief as I possibly can. I was in here probably a month ago. And I had some complaints about the assessment on my property. And I'm sure there's other people in Berkeley County that's got the same questions, but it's easier to just go ahead and write a check and be done with it. And I'm not that type of person. I want an answer. I want to know why I'm paying more than the next guy. I'll never ask a question why I'm not paying less. Common sense. I've spent a lot of hours going through bowling records. And I'm not educated enough to be able to really explain my point like I think it should be. So I'm very wrong in what I say and how I say it. I was given the opportunity by whoever. When I got my new assessment of taxes, and I'm going to be repeating something that I thought about a month ago, but I got to do that. I was given the opportunity, like anybody else in Berkeley County. If you had questions about your tax assessments, if they increased by $1,000 or 10%, you had the right to make contact with the commission or the assessor's office and go through this. And you could be here today. This happened to me about four years ago. I was assessed over $100,000 on a five acre piece of ground that was right beside my other two acre piece of ground. And only because of that letter that was given to me was I able to come in here. And that got resolved. And when I left here, I was completely okay with it. I had three properties in this new tax that was hit, the assessment. You don't mind a few hundred dollars, but when it comes into thousands of dollars, I'm going to complain about it. And that's what I've done. And I don't think any of you guys would be any different if you were sitting on this side of that podium than what I am. When I got my letter, and I wasn't anticipating because I didn't get the letter by the 10th of January or the 12th of January, I never even gave it a thought until February the 3rd or the 4th, I get a letter. The letter that was postmarked January the 32nd or 31st. But the letter that I am working off of was made up on January the 9th. It says I have eight days to respond. If I don't respond, it's now in void. So I can't respond to something that I don't get. Now, who made that available to me? I have not a clue. But I'm in no way, shape, or form in the wrong for what I am asking, what I'm wanting to do, the answers that I want. I was expecting to get some kind of reply within the last 30, 40 days since I've been here. And I haven't. So here I am again. And I'll be here next month if I have to. But I think this is very important to me because this is my money and I pay my taxes. You've given me the right to appeal. Your comrades or your, I don't mean to say it that way, but your associates, your assessors and stuff, you give me the right to question them. But if I don't get the opportunity to come in here and question them, you just well wadded up and throw in the trash can because that's exactly what we've done. Now, when I contact the people that I'm supposed to, sorry, Sonny, there's not a thing we can do for you. It's out of our hands. I understand you guys can only do what you can do, and that's anybody. But this is something that keeps the county running is taxes. And there's enough disgruntled people out there complaining about the way things are done in this county. They don't need this kind of aggravation, and I assures the devil don't. But if I can't get an answer, then I got to just keep knocking on the door and you're going to get tired of seeing me eventually. Somebody should get to me. You can't tell me that this board, this assessor's office cannot do. If it's not your fault, then why in the hell blame me? And take my rights away? This was given to me as my right. You don't like what's going on? You can protest it. And you can come in, and if I didn't protest it within the proper time that I was given, I understand I lost my availability to do that. But that's not the case. I didn't get this stuff until weeks after. And then when I call, they say, well, sorry, we can't do anything. You have to, the only thing I can give you, Sonny, is the number for the West Virginia Tax Appeals Office. My problem is not in Charleston. I don't pay my taxes to Charleston. They may get to Charleston, but that's not where I pay my taxes. I pay my taxes locally. Why should I have to be scrutinized and put out to have to go to Charleston to get an answer when the answer's right here? Somebody didn't do their job. It wasn't me. I'm not saying, who? Because I don't know. But for you to give me an answer over the telephone, we can't do anything for you. Now you've taken responsibility as far as I'm concerned. And I'm going to do everything in my power to make you accountable. And that's all I want is accountability. We pass a buck so much in this county that it's hard to tell what's good and what's bad. But to take my right, and I have the letter, I have the envelope that it was mailed in to show you, probably don't need to, you probably have already did some research and found it yourself. But that right was taken away from me. Be no different than if you go into the, make your vote here, November, whatever day they vote, and they tell you, well, we're sorry, you're late walking in the door. Same difference. But to put me in Charleston, that I got to talk to somebody down there that first of all tells me, well, we're not funded by the state of West Virginia, we're a neutral party. Bullshit, crap. Let the mail don't go through a week and you'll hear the crying down there. They are funded. There is money from West Virginia that pays those people's things. But to tell me in a letter that I have to show cause, I have to show cause in why I think the assessor made a mistake in my property. Who is better to tell me where that mistake is than the assessor? Who is better to ask that guy, bring our complaint, than me? I'm the one that is going to have to, at the end of the day, is going to have to pay the bill. And I don't, you can't tell me, you can't convince me that there's not something somebody can do if they wanted to. But it's easier, it's easier than, you know, confront somebody that's on a little higher scale than what you are and pass it off. Or we'll just pass it on to the taxpayer, you know, just pass it on to the taxpayer. Well, I'm a little different taxpayer than most. Not that I don't want anything for nothing, but if you want to give me something, I'll take it. But, you know, I work for my money. I'd like to know if somebody's got to show cause of why I'm contested this here, I think it would be the assessor's office or the people that's in responsibility. Shouldn't be my, I shouldn't have to come in here and prove why John Streets did what he did. Okay? Well, let's just go another step. If he does, then he going to be able to tell me, what was your comparison to me? My $100,000 that I had, was forced, not forced to pay, but should have been, they used, I've got a trucking company. The two examples that John Streets used to just the increase that I had was up here beside of North Junior, Junior High, there's a bonded used to have a little office here, daycare. That was sold. Out here on Route 11 and behind the police barracks, there's 11 acres right along 81. That was used to assess me. Now, I would rather have 11 acres that was exposed to 81 than I would to have the five acres that's down here on this rock ledge. There is no comparison between Spurgeon Trucking or any trucking company in Berkeley County that will match up with daycare center. But that's the excuse that I got. Now, I accepted it, but I didn't accept it because I'm talking about it now. Somebody has to do something to eliminate this unnecessary passing the buck, what your name is, what your business is, who your grandfather was, all that. The click. I shouldn't have to prove why my property is what it is. John Streets asked me several different times, what would you take for your property if you was going to sell it? That's none of his damn business. I'll be like anybody else. I'll take as much as I can get. The value of that property is going to be between the buyer and the seller. Shouldn't be here. If I overprice my property and I make a boatload, what is it, anybody? It's my ability. I paid the taxes on it. I've worked on it for 20 plus years. So I have made adjustments down there. Basically what the assessor's office tell me, don't make any improvements on your property, Sonny, because we're going to assess you more money for it. But then if I let the weeds and it look like crap But then if I let the weeds and it looked like crap down there, then I'm going to have somebody else knocking on my door. So, we gotta, you gotta have some kind of an equilibrium, a balance.
Yeah, Sonny, when you were here three or four weeks ago, I wasn't here that day, but I went, I watched online, and I felt that you presented yourself very well, I understood exactly where you're coming from. So, I went to see John and discuss with John, "Where are you coming at?" Because this guy says he doesn't feel like he's being treated fair, and I don't like that. So, he did explain to me what I'm going to, we have the assessor here, who's, that's their job, it's not our job, but you have every right to come to us because we do represent the public, and that's what we're supposed to do. So, I'm going to ask the assessor if he and his guy that does commercial, I think it's John, "Are you willing to sit down with Sonny and myself, if you're okay with me being there, to lay it out and listen to him, listen to every word he's got to say, and then you listen to what John has to say and see where you are? And if it has to be dealt with in Charleston, that we make that phone call right then and there and help him deal with this situation instead of kicking him out the door and letting him do it on his own? I think we can do better than that. I hope that we can do better than that. That's what I'm willing to do."
Larry, you know, to fast credit where credit's due. First time I seen Larry Hess was playing music, and I was dancing to him. After that, why, it became bad stuff. Larry has worked with me, he's given me ample time, he's listened to me in his office. I didn't like his, I didn't like his last response, and that's what we're talking about now. But Larry has tried to make it, but then again, it's like anybody else, our hands is tied to a certain degree. But if we just continue to walk around with blindfolds on, then we're always going to not see what the hell's going on.
Yeah, well...
And Larry has done, he is, I have no complaints with Larry.
I would appreciate if you could all sit down, and if necessary, if Charleston were the solution is to help you through that process, instead of saying, "Nope, it's up to Charleston," I would like for us to be able to sit down, make a phone call with Sonny sitting there, so he can hear what the discussion is, and he can be part of that discussion.
If I may, I mean, this has been in litigation, and we appealed it to the Office of Tax Appeals. I represent the assessor. Assistant Law Judge has directed Mr. Spurgeon multiple times to contact me and sit down with the assessor. That's this. Did do that once. They directed him again, and he refused. His own assessment, that assessment. Don't think it's wise to, outside of litigation, other parties discussing it. It's right now. Three or four hearings. Process, I mean, it changed to where we wouldn't have to prove much different about you, Office of Tax Appeals, which is a tax burden, the tax revenue. But, and it's gotten much better for the taxpayer because the burden of proof, the evidence, where before, a much higher standard was clear and convincing of it. So, that's just what the new process is. I don't, as administrator, prior to going to court, the court already wanted to, wants to have the courts, multiple opportunities, sat down multiple times, and you made this plan, I don't know, but bringing the county commission in, pardon.
Well, we may not be party to the action, but we do represent the public. And that's all I'm asking, is to try and find, and I'll be honest with you, I was not aware that it was already in litigation. I was not aware of that. If I did, I forgot, okay, just be honest. But I was just trying to find a way forward, that's all.
Well, to answer his question, I was brought here to confront you all because of this letter. This letter didn't tell me to go to Charleston and go through the tax appeals. This letter told me to, if I had a complaint, I had eight days to respond.
Which you got late.
Which I didn't get till February. So, by that time, it's three weeks behind, it's done. And then for you to sit and tell me, "There's not a thing you can do for me, that you can't help me," you know, now you're on a little basis, "Hell no, I don't want to take it to Charleston. There's enough screw-ups down there that we don't need to be taking every little quin and quan we got." And be very honest, I don't care for this guy. I want, his demeanor and his ideas, you know, don't agree with me. He may be a fine person, but in this kind of stuff, I don't like it, period. And I am going to speak how I feel. And this is part of the thing, you know, why should he be in here telling me what I have to do through Charleston? I'm very capable of making that decision. We made this decision four years ago and didn't have the other attorney involved in it, only to say, "Sonny, do you agree to the settlement?" I said, "Yes, I do." Easily done. We screwed with this thing since February. Why? Because the system screwed. Now, nobody wants to take blame for that. Nobody wants to go to Charleston and say, "Hey, listen, you've caused a, you've opened up a bee's nest up in Berkeley County." You're damn right you have. Now, I don't know how brave I'll be to go to the next step if it starts costing me money because that's what I'm here about. I'm here about money. If I can't pay you and pay them too, so I'll have to make a decision. But it shouldn't come to that, gentlemen. This is, this letter sets it all. I don't know if he's even read this letter. Probably hasn't. He's just going on the basis of, "Here's an irate taxpayer that don't want this, don't want that, he hasn't responded." No, I haven't responded. I've talked to those people down there, and it's like talking to that wall. They're not going to do nothing for me. They don't know where Shape Charge Road is in Charleston. How in the hell are they going to make a judgment on me? And what I'm, I'm not complaining about the taxes, I'm complaining about the way that they handled the stuff to start with. That's my complaint. I've already paid half of my taxes, so allow me time to deal with it here. So, I've already went ahead and consented to some of the things that I disagree with, but I paid it because I want to do the right thing. But I want to be treated right. I want to be treated fair. And there's nobody else that's going to take care of Sonny, and Sonny will take care of himself. I'll do the best I can, as honest as I can, as fair as I can, and as civil as I can. But if it has to go the nasty route, so be it. I just want, you know, I'm sitting at home thinking, I've been in here and I talked to those guys, and I'll be getting something. I'll be getting some kind of a reply. I don't think I was asking too much. I mean, this was screwed up. Are they saying you guys are, that you screwed up and sent me a letter of what you could do for me when I was here a month ago? I don't think that's the case. But no one's addressing this because we're letting Charleston rule the roost. And then we have to dance to their music. I ain't doing it. I'll be fair, but I ain't doing it. So...
Let's see what we can get done.
I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Believe me, when I say this, I had more questions I wanted to ask, but I think we did pretty good. I'll be back. All I want to be done is treated fair, no different than you guys would, no different than anybody else in this room. Just want to be treated fair. And what people do, they started it years ago. They didn't want to confront the authority figure. So, what do we do? We write a check, we get them out of our hair, and that's the simple thing to do. We don't get anything rectified, we don't get anything justified, we don't get anything done, except just keep saying, "Okay." Eventually, it will run dry, boys. And I do thank all of you.
Thank you.
All of you.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda if there are no modifications.
Good move.
Second, and probably moving second, any questions? On favor, say aye. Okay, purchase law, any questions for Tracy? Go let her off the hook. All right, Tracy, you're good to go.
I renamed your Tammy this morning, by the way.
Tammy?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Wanda, internal budget revisions. So, change of status, new hire recommendation received from Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator, for Christopher Owens as a custodian. With an annual salary of $32,250 effective September 23, 2024. New hire recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, 911 Director, for Jessica Esposito as a call taker with an annual salary of $46,356, effective date is to be determined. New hire recommendation received from Honorable Sheriff Rob Blair for Necklace Queen as an Animal Control Officer with an annual salary of $36,615 effective October 1, 2024. New hire recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, 911 Director, for Acoya Blue as a call taker with an annual salary of $46,356, effective date to be determined. Change of status received from the Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor, for the following, effective September 16, 2024. Megan Murphy is going from Personal Property Clerk to Personal Property Supervisor with a salary increase of $53,705 to $60,000. And that Tim Brooke is going from Assistant Supervisor of Business, Personal Property Tax Supervisor with an increased salary from $71,826 to $75,000. Change of status received from the Honorable Sheriff Rob Blair for Christopher Merson, who is going from Corporal to Deputy, his salary will change from $73,248 to $69,810 effective September 11, 2024. Letter of resignation received from the Sheriff's Office for Shanaya Four, effective September 5, 2024. Letter of retirement received from Engineering from John Vick, effective November 30, 2024. Letter of resignation received from Court Security for Daniel Wright, effective September 30, 24. Everybody's here for the minutes, so we'll leave that alone. We have a, let me get called up here. Have a stop payment request. What was yelling, Penny?
A cancel check for avoided check, and a stop payment as well.
Okay. And that's submitted by finance. We also have bond reduction. I got caught up to you here, Doug. Okay. Bond request, bond reduction request, warranty state, Tabor Station Logistics Parks tied to BP 2408-245 tied to Lama Case 2403-080, number 2104-134, and number 21100051, bond number 107400736. We also have bond reduction requests for warranty start, 109 Tavern Road, BCP 2403-065, 2403-064, 2209-287, and 2303-0116, bond number 0835967. Also, bond request, bond release request for Spring Mills PUD, Phase 11, Sections 2, lots 166 through 191, BCP 2102-060 tied to Lama Case 016-14, and 2102-074, bond number Bond request released for Macy's Distribution, Martinsburg Distribution Center, file number 2311-366 tied to 2401-005, 2110-398, number 2206-0196, bond number 285070367. Bond release request for North Mountain Substation, grading permit, BCP File 2104-126, ties to 22112-393, 2307-248, and 2108-004, 0004, bond number K40311075. Bond reduction star, warranty star, Falling Waters Business Center, lot number nine, BCP number 077-09 tied to BCP 2407-221, 2407-220, 2203-074, and number R00668-20, bond number Order to, that's the end of that. Woo, Doug, you've been busy.
Just keeping things, though.
Yeah. Yeah, you're doing that all right. Okay, we have an order to open fund 022, Justice Funds E-Share with United Bank.
So, the purpose of that money is your, the law enforcement division is receiving E-share monies for efforts involved with, so there are two sets of E-shares, Justice and Treasury. This is a Justice E-share. You had some transactions way back to 2009 that existed, and then a big void up to 2022. Then all of a sudden, you started seeing flowing, there's $30,000 or change. Well, one of the discrepancies in that process that we identified was those monies are supposed to be kept separate from any other monies, to quote the verbiage and the language from the document, not to be co-mingled with other funds. So, we need to move that, we need to create a fund, move them in there, and the same rules apply to expending those funds. So, you have to put them in the account so when we spend, so when the federal government wants to audit, it's clearing inside. So, it's a matter of following their rules.
How much funds you talking about?
$31,000.
And how does a sheriff spend them?
So, there's guidelines on what he can spend them for you, and they have an expenditure ready. As a matter of fact, they're waiting on us to do this. When we started reading the documents, we said, "Well, we need to do just a little tidying up of this stuff." They get direct deposited into our grant fund, which is Fund Nine, and historically, again, they haven't been paid, they just laid there. But we really need to get correct on the way we're accounting for them, particularly on the expense side. So, we have to fix the income side before we fix the expense side.
That's the source of the money, is coming from?
When I asked that question, everybody went like this. Just shows, it's a share of processes clearly that we're tied to, and no one knew. Again, saw some transactions dated back to 2009, and then kind of a big lull and nothing, and then we've seen 25 or so thousand, 25-plus thousand dollars for the transactions that I spoke about. I'd ask the same question, no one did. But I did get that document, said, "Here's what we're supposed to do with it."
Now, this guy, right? Need to entry in my backyard.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Good move.
Probably move the second, any further questions? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, up next is the assessor, Larry Hess. Morning, sir.
Morning.
Morning, Larry.
Got some exonerations, personal property first. We have a total of twenty-four, and I've had twenty-four every week for the last few weeks, but we had that stack that we were working on that because of that report, then this pretty much is going to clean it up this weekend, next week, so shouldn't see that twenty-four come in every week. But anyway, I got twenty-four personal property exonerations we had to make a correction on, for the reasons that's listed there. If you total up all twenty-four, the total amount of exonerations are five thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Hey, you've heard the exoneration request from the assessor, I have a motion.
So move.
Second. Second, it's been properly moved in second, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Good, thank you. I do have two for the real estate, we had correct, two on the real estate, we had, we had one where the square footage was, was incorrect, we had the correct that, and we had one with the farm was not applied. Both of those total up to four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents for the exonerations for real estate.
Okay, you've heard the assessor request, I need a motion.
So move.
Second. Probably move in second, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Good, thank you. The only other thing I have would be, we have a divorce, Michael Godwin and his ex-wife now, Stephanie Charlton. They had two vehicles, total assessed value of eleven thousand and twenty-five dollars, and they asked if we could split the billing up. Michael got one BMW with a total assessed value of six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, and Stephanie is going to get a bill for four thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars worth of assessment, and to be able to do that, I need your approval today.
Okay, you've heard the request from the, from the assessor on the final divorce motion. I need a motion.
So move.
Then properly moved, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, down to board and meeting reports.
Mr. Warren. Yes, sir. Had a roundhouse meeting this week, and good, good stuff going on over there, a lot, a lot of movement. Approved MOU with the Eastern West Virginia Community Foundation. They helped to fund a few projects down there over the last, last couple of years, most recently, the gutter and spouting project in twenty-three. Foundation is presenting roundhouse with preservation award for the project at a reception this Sunday. And then we received just one bid for the roundhouse dome window refurbishment project. The bid was reviewed, is being reviewed by SHPO and the board. Hopefully that gets approved, and we can go ahead and get those windows fixed in the top dome at the roundhouse. We're still funding different sources to get that project done. Legislation, money, and also some matching funds. So that should be underway soon to fix those windows that had been leaking. Prior to the gutters being put on, water was coming down and sitting in those seals and rotting the bottom of those windows that had been done up there. So now the gutters are there, and water's not really coming in, but now we need to fix the rot before it continues to keep going up. So that should be done quickly, and quotes are being obtained from businesses for two-eight ADA brick walkways on the site. We requested funding from the city's new nonprofit fund program, and other sources are being explored. That would put, we have thirty-two pallets of brick at the roundhouse that we obtained from the brickyard some years ago. And they've been sitting there to be used for walkways and such, and we've just not really made movement on that, but now, now we are. And that would put a brick walkway between the roundhouse double doors in the back, in the bathroom and elevator, so make that ADA compliant there, like a sidewalk between the two, and then also a wide walkway coming out of the front of the Frog and Switch shop, coming over to the pedestrian bridge where most people were entering for Farmer's Market and other events. So that would give us full ADA complacency. I mean, we kind of have it now, but it, you're going across some dirt and some gravel for the most part to get around. This would make it a lot more feasible for ADA. And then the elevator and steps project still in the final phase with the punch list, inspecting things with the elevator, been some ups and downs with the climate control in the shaft, I guess, and some lighting, but they're, they're knocking those things out. And HVAC activation pending identification, about the twenty-two thousand we need for additional electrical upgrades to finish that, that's down to about that and hooking up the gas, but they've been in there doing the final stuff to get that ready to tie in as of recent on a regular basis. So that's pretty much what's going on down there right now. Farmer's Market's doing well, it's growing. Merry Makers Market's coming up here in December, pretty much from the weekend after Thanksgiving all the way to the weekend before Christmas, they'll have markets two days a week down there. So everything's rolling along.
Good. Sound like a lot of things happening down there.
Yeah.
A lot of good things. Mr. Barnhart.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Welcome to the presidency, who just came in on the great fanfare and parades and all that music.
Secret tape, the confetti.
I had a Region Nine Planning and Development Council meeting Monday morning. My term as chairman has expired, so I want to be known that a new chairman had to be elected. After some discussion, they decided on Kevin Knowles to be the new chairman of Region Nine Planning and Development Council. So he'll, he'll start in December, I assume, and it's a two-year term. They had a guest speaker, Daniel Eads, the Rural Development Specialist for the W Extension Service, West Virginia Housing Development Fund's statewide housing needs assessment, and he gave a report on the Eastern Panhandle, and much to our surprise, Jefferson, of course, has the most expensive housing, Berkeley number two, Morgan a little ways down. He just wanted to talk to us about what we, you know, what we felt about housing in West Virginia, and of course, I remarked to him that Berkeley County adds a thousand new addresses a year. In, I mean, and it's been steady for several years. And I said, what do you want us to do? And of course, the conversation immediately turned to affordable housing, whatever that is. Of course, it was generally agreed that nobody quite understood what affordable housing was, affordable to who and how much, because, you know, most of the properties, houses are going, what, four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred, five hundred, you know, somewhere in that range. And of course, townhouses are a little less because you don't have, you know, property with them, and they're not really building that many apartments, and rent on those are, I don't think, very affordable to low-income people. So discussion kind of settled around that, didn't really come to anything, but, you know, I guess he's got some material to take back to, to his people. Of course, the reports by several managers, MPO, I asked Matt, do you ever get a response? And he said, well, from Charleston, and he said, mentioned Steve Catlett. I don't know if Steve got any sort of response or not.
Somewhat, I guess.
Oh, okay. Yeah, he said you weren't very happy with it. And then
I believe it is that.
All right. And then Monday night, I had a Water District meeting. Let me, I didn't get papers, so give me a second here. They had a payment to Global Heavy, which is for the construction and other services Potomac River Water Treatment Plant, and to the tune of six-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars. Emery and Garrett, which are engineers, are scheduled to be in town to evaluate well sites at the Inwood Quarry. Bunker Hill main, water mains are ready to go out to bid. Three new Ford Rangers have been received to the fleet. Some talk about the old three-M plant going to being a bottled water facility, but that's just talk. There's supposedly data centers being considered on the property of the eastern part of the county, installed seventy-nine new meters. Pike Side Water Main is about complete, they're just tying in the individual sites to the, to the water mains, and Bunker Hill Plant, the contract has suggested they will be six months to a year behind the completion date, but that's mostly components showing up. And the Fever Spring is holding its own. So that's good news.
That is good news. That is, sir.
That's it.
Mr. Catlett.
Yes, Farm Land Protection Board Meeting was held this past Monday. Just to give you a little info, last fiscal year, twenty-twenty-four ended June thirtieth, property transfer brought in two million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars for the farmland, so that is still maintaining a pretty healthy level. And so far this year, like this past month's fee was, collected was two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. So after the first two months of this year, they're already eighty thousand dollars ahead of last year's base on property transfer taxes. And right now, the board is working on applications for the, this new year. At this point in time, they've closed, the total acreage now in Farm Land Protection of Berkeley County is eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five acres, so we're getting close to that ten thousand acres, and if you're curious to know, there's two-hundred-and-four thousand acres in Berkeley County total, so get to ten thousand, you're close to five percent, so. That's eighty-three properties are now protected, so hopefully there'll be several more placed into the program this year, so. One of the properties that's been in limbo for over a year and a half now is, got cyber tortured out on Harden Road there on exit twelve, obviously, so. And that seems to, in my mind, a very important one to try to get into the program, so we're working hard to make that happen. Ambulance Authority asked to meet with Dave Urban, who is the president of the ambulance authority, and Brian Costello and Brandon Truman, talk about their strategic planning for the next five years. I asked Eddie to sit in on that meeting, and you know, we just had a fee increase several years ago, so the hope is that there won't, there won't be any need for another fee increase several more years down the road, but at this point in time, there are some continued needs, and it seems to be the most important one, as right now, as most of you know, there's six stations, ambulance stations, and four of those stations have twenty-four-seven coverage. Then the two that don't, of course, is Back Creek Valley and also the Mid-Atlantic Station Forty-Nine, the Atlantic Park, the Beddington Substation. And so it seems that what the statistics show that greatest need right now is to get twenty-four-seven coverage there in Mid-Atlantic, so that's going to be the hope over the next year or so to make that happen. And then, of course, we had conversation about what do we do in West Berkeley County, back at the Woods area and Sleepy Hollow area. That is the part of the county that has the slowest response time in terms of ambulance service, even though the call volume is fairly low. But at the same time, big concern there, and Eddie, you know, if Hedgesville's out on another call, then the next response team from, for the woods in that area out there would be either Mid-Atlantic or those stations, so now
Marla.
Marla, so you're talking, and at nineteen minutes, the average response time for the whole county is like nine and a half minutes. Back there it's nineteen, but that, that includes, but when Hedgesville's not there, that nineteen minutes now becomes probably thirty minutes plus. That, that's obviously a concern. Because that's all going to be, you know, looked at, and the board will consider a lot of things over the next couple of meetings here to develop this plan for the future, the next five years, hopefully. But we had a really good conversation and a lot of good statistics there to show where all the needs are, and there's a total that last year was like fifteen thousand, accounting for the whole year, so. And I think out of that, almost nine thousand, they had to transport that fifteen thousand, so it continues to grow each year as our population grows.
Steve, is there room for expansion on that property where the current firehouse is near the woods?
Well, that, that was talked about, there, there is, and of course, it's going to take money to do it, but then also, there's three bays in there, correct Eddie, and that the Hedgesville Fire Department owns that building, and they have three, they may be able to remove a vehicle to place an ambulance there. But the building itself, though, back there is not suited for twenty-four-seven, where somebody could spend the night and all, so there would have to be an upgrade to it.
So not a whole lot if they really wanted to just do the minimal.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't think the need right now is to do twenty-four-seven back there, actually, it's just maybe have something five to seven days a week on a twelve-hour basis.
It would also serve that entire region, you know.
Right. Including Morton County?
Yeah, somewhat, I mean.
And we do, you know, it, obviously, you know, one of the things is, if we had a there, we may be cornered in Morton County more than we are now.
Well, anywhere in Sleepy Hollow, you have to cross into Morton County.
Yeah.
But that's just the way it lays off.
Two-thirds of those homes are in Morton.
Yeah.
That's one of them, the mutual aid agreement would really have to be tightened down, and then, you know, at the end of the day, what's, what is best for that patient? That's, that's what we can't lose focus of, you know, if it's, if we can get an ambulance there, get them treated, and, and get them to a hospital, that's, that's the end goal. You know, you know, none of us like for our agencies to be taken advantage of, but on that west side, and actually on the county, Morton County's east side, they have a longer response time than what we do.
Yeah, man, you got that trailer park there right on the county line.
Yeah, so, so that whole, that whole area needs help, and I would, I'm really hopeful that the ambulance authority will, will work and try to get a unit, even if it's a BLS unit out there, to be able to get people help within a timely manner. That, that's the goal.
And the solution, of course, is more funding, and my answer to that is, is that hopefully get this impact fee thing in place that could, not, not for personnel, but for equipment and things, and we can provide that through impact fee, that money then could be used instead of what they're paying another operating budget for personnel to cover twenty-four-seven in Mid-Atlantic, and maybe potentially something in the west area of West Berkeley County. But that's all I have.
That's it?
Thank you.
The only thing I had this week was the Development Authority meeting, which, you know, they, they continue to be busy, there's still a lot of interest. Mr. Barnhart mentioned earlier, the data centers that are looking here, you know, which, right out the gate, you know, a lot of our concern right out the gate, you know, a lot of our concern is the amount of water that they need for cooling. Two, that's kind of the front runners here, really don't need hardly any water at all for their cooling system. So that's, that's a real big plus for us. They do need a lot of electricity, but that's, that's up for the power company to figure that out. But that's it, really. The property is closed, that the Development Authority came before us and asked for a partnership on a gas line, if you remember. That property is closed, so that process is now, you know, taking place with the construction of, of that facility, so.
Eddie, is there anything mentioned in your Development Authority about the road down at the CMC access road?
Yes, sir. Both of those applications have been made, last year's application and this year's application to be able to get that.
Funded.
The state-funded roadway in that facility, you know, which will have an at-grade crossing. There will not be a bridge there, even if it's a temporary.
Did you give any timeframe for this?
No, sir. We may get more information perhaps out of CMC on that. But that will be at least a temporary road to get a lot of that truck traffic out of, out of Beddington and off of Brown.
There was an accident down there a few days ago. Concrete truck. See if we can get them off that road.
Yeah, I agree. It's less than desirable. Okay, no other appointments need to be made this week. Mr. Wicker, you have a Chinese report?
No, no meetings. I've got some next week. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, Will, we're running a little bit behind, but apologize for that.
No problem, Mr. Wicker. Neither of these estate hearings scheduled for this morning require action from this body. I wanted to clarify that. There have been some other counties that have actually had, run into some trouble for lack of transparency and kind of closed door behind the curtain meetings of whether or not this commission needs to actually hear estate hearings for various reasons. And to combat that issue, even when an estate hearing wants to be postponed or indeed canceled, I still feel it necessary to address this body in open session. The estate hearing for James Lewis III needs no further action because the administratrix has formally withdrawn her petition to resign. James Lewis passed away intestate on April 18th, 2024, and Leola Lewis, the decedent's mother, qualified on May 21st after being bonded for $20,000 from Smith, Madden, Bush Insurance. Leola Lewis is not an heir at law to this estate. The biological, the decedent's biological daughter, Carly Lewis, is the sole heir. But as this body may know, after 30 days of the decedent's death, anyone can open an estate. Even though my office spoke to her more than a dozen times via telephone, Leola Lewis was still seemingly shocked to find out that she was not an heir at law of this estate. Couple that with the fact that there were seemingly no probate monies to pay for things like the decedent's mortgage of the solely owned real estate at issue and her location, her being the decedent's mother, Leola, her location in Georgia. Leola decided to return her letters of administration to my office via mail and petition to resign from her position as administrator. Once my office received this resignation, this hearing was set and notices were sent out in mid-July, setting a deadline for written objections or exceptions for last Friday. That's Friday, September 6th. On that Friday, my office received a letter from Amanda Lewis, who apparently now represents Leola Lewis, asking for a postponement of this proceeding. All of that is in your read ahead. I responded to Ms. Lewis via email stating that her client's presence was likely not necessary, given this, this commission would almost certainly give her client what she wanted, to be removed. After several days and a telephone call with Amanda Lewis alongside Mr. Delgotti, we were able to discern that Ms. Lewis actually wanted to withdraw her client's petition to launch some sort of investigation regarding the probate assets. While speaking with Ms. Lewis on the telephone yesterday, I asked her to formalize her position in writing. She did so in a single-sentence email, which I have copies of, if you'd like to take a look at it. As such, the petitioner has withdrawn her resignation and now seemingly wishes to continue as fiduciary over this estate. Make no mistake, you will very likely see this estate again, either to remove Ms. Leola Lewis by the decedent's sole heir for cause, or by Ms. Lewis herself continuing her seeking resignation. Nevertheless, she has withdrawn her petition and to resign in assistance, albeit less than 24 hours ago. Alternatively, the estate for Robert Widmire needs no action by this commission. Due to the parties, both the petitioner and respondent, coming to a privately negotiated agreement, I received the signed agreement only last night, again, less than 24 hours ago, and can distribute them as requested. The parties in this estate have acted as I, as I believe this commission should want them to act. They have each sought legal expertise, come together and privately negotiated something that works for each of them. As such, nothing further need happen for the estate of Robert and Edmar, Widmire, excuse me. So that's it.
Very good, Will.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the Shenandoah Valley Chapter of NSDAR, Barbara Frankenberry. Come on in, ma'am.
Bring your entourage with you.
Got your folks with you. Come on up.
Good morning. Thank you all for allowing us to come, celebrate our constitution. You know, we've heard a lot of controversy about it here in the last couple months, years and all, and we know it's a document that is very important. And soon, we're going to celebrate the 250th anniversary of it. And I know you all have big plans for Berkeley County, right?
Working on it.
Yes, okay, good. Well, don't forget to fill us in on it and make sure that we'll, we'll be glad to take part in anything that you have. But now it's, it is important that we celebrate and make people aware of this proclamation every year, that we do have a constitution that is working and is obviously very suited to what we need for our needs in America. So would you like to read it?
No, we'll leave that to you, if that's all right.
Well, I'll see if I can.
I'm just temporarily filling in. Eddie's got the gavel, so.
Eddie has a gavel? Oh, congratulations, wonderful. Well, the Berkeley County Commission and the Shenandoah Valley Chapter National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution. Whereas, the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, sponsors September 15th through the 21st as Constitution Week each year. And whereas, September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, public law, 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designing September 15th through the 21st as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Berkeley County Commission, Martinsburg, West Virginia, and the Shenandoah Valley Chapter, NSDAR, hereby proclaim the week of September 15th through the 21st as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And you guys will sign it then, okay? All right.
I certainly will. It's here somewhere in the package.
Yep. John Hancock, did we send John Hancock?
I don't think he's here. He might be in spirit.
I'd like to have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented for Constitution Week. So moved. Probably move?
Second.
Second? Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll get a picture?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You have no questions? Last year, you quizzed us. This year, I studied. Let's get a picture.
Let me say something before we do. Robert just lost her husband, Bob, of course, and he's going to be missed by this county so much, all the things that he did in this community.
All the stories, all the stories he used to tell.
He was good at that, wasn't he?
Oh, my heavens.
I shared 25 years of July 4 fireworks with Bob over the years and the rest of the Donald family, and we became really good friends. But he did so many other things as well. And we, we reach out to you and your condolences for his, your loss, but he was a great person in this community and we're going to miss him.
Thank you.
I kind of had it summed up as, as Bob was an all-American.
That's a good way to put it.
He never missed a Memorial Day. In fact, he was the guest speaker out there several times.
He was, he was. He didn't realize he was the guest speaker. They just asked him to say a few words. Luckily, he was a little bit more prepared than just a few words when he realized he was it. And we just, you know.
He was a good and faithful servant of this country.
Yes, he was.
Especially the county.
Yeah, yeah. The cards are incredible, you can imagine. And almost every single one, he was a good man. He was a great guy. He was a great guy. He was a great, he was a good guy. And I told the kids, I said, that's got to go on his tombstone, okay? He was a good guy, great man, whatever. So we'll work on that later, though. But, yeah. Thank you for recognizing his, his attributes, whatever they may be, whether they were to tell a story. But that's okay.
Yeah, he had, he had a few stories in him.
He did. But he had a, he had a life that gave him those stories too, you know? And my children are kind of, they're, they're very, especially Ryan, the fact that Bob was such a good dad, but he didn't have a dad because his dad died when he was five years old. You know, and he worked very hard. But we did, we were, we were a pretty good team. We were a pretty good team. And, yeah. But I was lucky. His dad died at 38. His brother died at 38. And Bob made it to 75. So pretty darn good. So, thank you.
All right. Take a break and get yourself a picture.
Yep.
John, sir?
All right, we're back in session, and next up, we have Chad Weinberger, Deputy County Administrator, on roadside litter program. Morning, Chad.
Morning.
You notice he's being audited in the back of the room, too, to make sure it's done right.
So coming for you today, after quite a bit of work, as you all know, earlier this year, actually, I believe it was December of '23, community service was moved to community corrections, where Tim Ziya has worked with it, really continued to change and mold it, and that program continues to grow. We're starting to see an increase in participants in that program, and a lot of that's just due to Tim's, how the community corrections is set up, the personnel that have been put in place. And as we continue to evaluate that program, it became pretty evident, our roadside litter, which since its inception has been overseen by Mike Lang, Chief Deputy Court Marshal, has been a wildly successful program, it's gained staffing, it's gained equipment, but it's also a program that's largely driven by participation in community service. So, we looked at opportunities to integrate those two programs, and working with Tim, we came up with a solution that we believe is going to be great for roadside litter, community service, and community corrections. And the proposal is to take what has been the community service functions of the litter control program, move them underneath of community corrections. The two employees that are assigned to that as deputy court marshals right now, the employees and portions of their equipment will go to community corrections, where they would be assigned as dual role community service specialists and home confinement officers. What's that, what that will allow is the home confinement function to step in and help supplement community service. A lot of the home confinement participants are mandated in community service, and Tim has identified an issue where there are a fair amount that are not paying their fees and are having trouble showing up. Having these folks dual role will allow them to retrieve those, to bring them in, to get community service active, and to have even more participants in our roadside litter program. So we believe that this will help us move the roadside litter program to the next level. It's already functioning great, but we think with the increase in participation and with that direct link to home confinement and community service, it can do even better. Along with that proposition, you have right now one person assigned to community service, that is Summer Nails, her title is community service specialist. This would change her title to community service coordinator and regrade that from a grade eight to a grade 10. There would be no compensation changes with that regrading. The two job descriptions have been attached, so you would have two folks coming in as home confinement and community service specialists, and then Summer Nails would be reclassified as the community services coordinator.
Just a little history to this process. As we look at the departments, and the President, Vice President, myself met today with the Chief Judge, and we heard loud and clear the importance of court security and the protection of the judiciary, did we not?
We did.
Our goal, at your direction, is to ensure that every player is on the team they belong on, and that the team leaders are performing as effectively and as efficiently, and can prioritize exactly what their task to do. I get the vision way back when, and Clinton and I just had some dialogues about, well, we think this got assigned to the court marshals because the marshals were sworn and carried guns, and precarious things can happen on the side of the road with community service folks. This vision brings that model to community corrections in community service, allowing them to dual function as home confinement officers. They're still sworn, they still have a gun, and so on and so forth. So, all of the precautions and all of the availability that we had way back then comes forward today. As Chad mentioned, this is only going to give opportunity to grow the program. We can already identify, and by we, it doesn't mean Gary, it means Tim and Chad, have already identified opportunity to put people on the side of the roads immediately because they can't afford their home confinement payments. Well, right now, instead of skirting and just being a home confinement, they're a home confinement, they're going to come to work, and they're going to serve as litter officers or litter folks that day. So, a great idea, a great vision, kudos to Chad and Tim for getting together and really coming up with some awesome job descriptions, and you've got all the people in place. The County Commission and absolutely your administrative folks are committed to maintaining the status quo of your roadside litter efforts, but working as hard as we can to make it even better than has, and it was alluded to that your litter control efforts and your solid weight efforts are looked to as the best in the state of West Virginia, and I don't ever want to be attached to something that isn't the best or isn't getting better, because that's what we do for you. So, just my two cents on what a great idea I believe it is.
I do have one question. I may have missed something, but so you're taking two of the court marshals and moving them to the other building?
Taking...
Or to the other program?
Yes, that is correct.
So are we replacing those two guys?
No, they're not court marshals, they service as litter control officers outside the building, managed by court marshals.
Okay, so they had no role within the building over there?
Their role was assigned was to do litter control.
Okay.
They were doing that anyway, so we're really doing the same thing, they're just under a different umbrella.
They're just moving to where they're better supervised or better supervised that program.
I think the program can continue to grow, right? They were kind of separated from the program, as you will. This just creates a nice streamlined process, but truly no change in staffing, no change in compensation, just a migration inside the organization.
And getting folks kind of back in their lane or back in their silo, you know, we would prefer to have Mike Lang focused on court security.
Not overseeing litter control.
Not worry about that, you know, not worry about those other things, even though Mike worked hard to try and get things accomplished, and he did extremely good, but his expertise is in security, so that's what he needs to be doing.
Who would they answer to?
Summer Nails will be the coordinator of the community service team that reports up to Tim Ziya.
My only concern is, you know, Community Pride made that donation of that vacuum. Unfortunately, we have a lot of roads that need to be cleaned, and I just hope that this piece of equipment gets used and out like it was intended to be able to be done.
I believe you will see this change, have that piece of...
The hope is that eventually get another piece, have two... The hope is that eventually get another piece, have two crews. But if I understand this correctly, the home confinement people can do it.
So having them dual role under home confinement will allow them to bridge those two services. Participants who are not paying their fees, who are not showing up.
They can do this in lieu of paying their fees, is what you're saying, they'll get credit for it.
They cannot pay their fees, they will be put into community service. Right now, they have no mechanism.
And there are participants right now that they can apply to that. Just for the record, the gentleman behind that sweeper has my cell phone number, too, so I have no intentions of answering that phone call to say, why isn't this sweep around on the road? Right. Okay. Any further questions for Chad?
Need a motion for the roadside litter program realignment.
So moved.
Second.
Then probably moved and second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion through. Gary, you're up for a quality life commitment to the city of Martinsburg.
Yes, sir. So as many of you will remember, some of you weren't here when it happened, but the Monument Company that's doing the projects at the woolen mills down here, in their pilot agreement, one of the stipulations in the pilot agreement was a payment for quality of life. And it's, it's in three milestones, it's eighty-three thousand, three hundred, thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, so two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's to be paid when the UNO is issued at the completion of phases one, two, and/or three. Phase one is done, thanks to this great lawyer right here, he ensured that their pilot payment of the previous year and current year are paid, and we are in receipt of the year quality of life payment. I know for a fact that the city of Martinsburg has approached Eddie and Steve, and maybe all of you inherently, but in that quality of life payment, it says, and I put it in here for you, that it's to be used for something inside the city of Martinsburg. What the mayor has asked, and Andy has discussed, and the city is asking, is that the monies, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be used for the purchase of property that belongs to, it's the Legion, who's the...
American Legion.
American Legion, that's down next here on Spring Street.
Next to the...
Knights of Columbus.
Rail trail, the old abandoned trail.
Right. So what, what the city has asked is that these monies be allocated to that acquisition. You only have eighty-three thousand, three hundred, thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents to offer right now, but what they're looking for is a commitment of all two hundred and fifty thousand towards that purchase.
What are they going to do with it?
It's going to be a extension of the trail and just become like extension, really, of a parking park, which is right on the other side of the trail.
The Legion or whatever was not going to buy it?
They don't need all the, they don't need all the land over there.
They're selling it, they'll sell it.
They're trying to acquire the little church that was there, and I think they want to keep part of it for parking, but beyond, they, they own more beyond that, and that's what they're selling to the city to get money to buy that building, I do believe.
What I would offer in a motion, if you so choose and you want to do it, is if it's nego, if the property purchase is negotiated less than the two fifty, that you'll contribute whatever the acquisition amount was. I don't know what they're going to get it for, but if you want to do that for that purchase.
Yeah, I mean, that was our original agreement, that that's, that that money be used for the Frog Hollow extension, or any, anything to enhance that Frog Hollow...
Within city limits of...
Correct, yes.
The only thing I would ask is that we get some kind of credit for that.
We're about to make the motion to... Okay. Need a motion to approve the quality life...
It's a really nice section, and it's a really nice piece of property for that, because even in the middle of the afternoon, it's a shade area in that area, already some picnic table there, but it could be made into something very nice.
I think you need a little parking also.
Yeah, there's room for that as well.
Yeah. The form of motion, Mr. Kevin?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion that we do this.
A second.
Probably move and second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And Gary, DRC security cameras?
So the, as you recall, last week, you opened bids for security cameras for the DRC expansion project. You had two respondents. One was Data Image Group out of Hagerstown in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty-one cents, and then Document Solutions, Inc., in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The bids were reviewed, the low bidder did meet specifications, so we're recommending that you award the bid to Data Image Group in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty-one cents.
Need a motion to approve the amount to Data Image Group for amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred, one dollars, eleven cents for David Port.
Twenty-one cents.
Twenty-one cents.
Missed print.
Missed print, says eleven.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Yep, we approved a bid recommendation for twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-one cents.
Or whichever number is correct.
I'd give the ten cents, I'm sorry.
It will be. I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Probably move and second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Twenty twenty-four audit.
Here we go. So it's that time of the year, the auditors put us on notice and submitted the allowable list for auditors to provide our, the services. One of the first things that you have to do is you have to appoint an audit committee before we even publish the paperwork. Last year, it was Penny, myself, and Sherry. I'm asking if the commission sees fit. I'd like to add Chad to that group. Can be no more than five, no less than three, but I'd like to put Chad in it, just to get him some experience in the process. And then if the commission chooses to do that, we'll get the RFP on the streets and get everything moving. It's due by March the twenty-fourth of 2025, so what time, we're on time, there's no issues, we just need to go through this effort first.
You need a motion?
We do, please. You have to...
I'll make that motion.
Probably move.
Second.
And second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Items from the public. Do we know? Do you have any reason for executive session? No, sir. Go on, audit.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I move to recess.
We are in recess.